Good morning, everyone. Thank you all for being here this morning. Remind those of you that may be here for the first time, anyone designing an agenda, can't hear, raise your hand, we'll do better. Agendas on the table in the back, my left rear. So, this morning, we will officially start the meeting by calling the meeting to order and pay attention to item number two, which is a public hearing this morning, first thing, in regards to the issue of repealing Resolution 1805. So, with that, the procedure will be officially to start the public hearing without objection from the commissioners. If you will raise your hand, be recognized, come to the podium, speak into the microphone, give us your name and your address, and speak specifically about this item. And the floor is now open. Anybody wants to speak?
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Tim Minton. I'm the Director of Government Affairs with the North Carolina Home Builders Association. I'll give you my address is 2008 Quail Road, Clayton, NC. I wish it were Holden Beach. This is my second trip here in the last two weeks, and at some point, I'm going to have to figure out a way to be able to stay longer. So, so beautiful. I'm not going to repeat what I said last week in terms of what we see as the average cost. The only thing I want to say, first of all, say thank you for looking at this issue again. It's clear to me that the council members understand the importance of housing to our, to the knowledge of North Carolina, but to this area. We greatly appreciate that you are looking at this again. The only thing I want to emphasize, and I just make reference to the bill itself in terms of what passed, and this deals with General Statute 162A-207, which basically are the minimum requirements when it comes to the system development fee. And I'll just read A. Maximum assistance development fee shall not exceed the calculated based on the system development fee analysis. And I think that's critical. It's also mentioned in the engineer's report. The purpose of the report is to determine, basically, what a maximum fee can be. I'm not really aware of anywhere in the state where they have charged the maximum fee. The idea that, working with the league of municipalities, was to sort of set the parameters for what the fee should be. Because our goal was to make sure that across the state, all local governments that own water and sewer systems have the legal authority to charge a fee, and then how that determination could be made. So, I think, I just want to emphasize that what the statute is, is what a maximum fee can be. It doesn't say that whatever a report says or doesn't say, that that is what the fee shall be. It just basically sets the parameters for that. So, once again, I want to thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Tyler Newman with BASE, and we have advocacy partnerships with the Brunson County Association of Realtors and the Brunson County Home Builders Association, and I wanted to speak in support of item number three, which would be an action to repeal the board's previous vote on the implementation of water and sewer development fees, and to replace that decision with an alternative fee schedule.
We're specifically on number two.
I understand, but, but number two talks about number three. It, it's all interrelated.
I'll give you some latitude for a minute.
Okay. Well, I sent you an email previously that we talked about at the last meeting. You can, as Ms. Minton just said, you can set a fee that's lower than your previous fee. We would encourage you to do have a similar fee prior to July 1st. And then take the time to go back and study some of the issues in the report, if that's what you need to do. We've talked about whether it's the million gallons per day allocation, or the gallons per day calculation, or the pipe size versus bedroom issue. All think, I think all of those are important. But anyway, we would encourage you to act today and support the recommendation of your attorney. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else want to speak this morning? Yes, ma'am.
Good morning. My name is Elaine Jordan. I live at 124 Sand Dollar here in Holden Beach. I also work at 131 Ocean Boulevard, West Holden Beach, General Counsel for the Coastal Companies, a developer here on the island. Though there are a lot of people here still very interested in this issue, and I appreciate your setting the time today to hopefully repeal where we are right now, and to refund different fees that have been paid since July 1st. I've given you three documents here, and I'm just going to deal with one issue in the engineer report. The town adopted the maximum fee. My understanding is that was not based upon the engineer's recommendation, but the town adopted it. If you look at just one issue in the engineer's report, which is, is the town's purchase of sewer allocation from Brunson County an eligible cost? That's a huge, almost two-thirds of the sewer component of the engineer fee. So, I'm just going to deal with that one issue. The first document I've handed to you, and I've highlighted here, this is from the school of government. And down at the bottom, it says that House Bill 436 does not apply to local governments that purchase water or wastewater services from other government entities. Does not apply. So, the fact that the engineer used that huge number, to me, is erroneous. The second document in your packet, I obtained from the public records request to the town. This is an email from the engineer to town staff. Down at the bottom, highlighted, "We spoke briefly about the sewer capacity purchase from Brunson County. Eligibility for including this capital investment in the system development fee's calculation rests on the definition of facility. While attending a workshop last week at UNC School of Government Finance, I posed this question to an attorney well-versed on this topic, who believes the SDF calculation could not, could not include investment in facilities that are not owned or operated, or to be owned or operated by the unit of government. You may refer an opinion from your town attorney before making a final determination." The third document is simply one page out of the engineer's report. Again, highlighted, "The town," not the engineer, "the town has determined ownership of capacity is an eligible cost that can be included in the SDF calculation." When did the town vote on that issue? Did the town vote on that issue before the engineer report went out? Who voted on that issue? My point is simply, there are a lot of questions about this fee. They need to be addressed. We need to repeal it where it is now, put it back to where it was. It can be done legally, and let's get it right, and then refund to anyone who has overpaid over the past 60 days. 60 days doesn't sound like a lot of time, but it is in the construction industry and Holden Beach in the height of the season. We really appreciate your coming today, special meeting, and your other meetings before, and hope, and know that you can and will do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else in the audience want to speak? If you're going to speak, I have been asked to remind all of you, today, we're going to run specifically and adhere specifically to the rules of order. So, the public hearing is now, and once we get out of this, then it's the commissioners that get to talk amongst themselves. So, whatever you want to say, unless permission is given by the commissioners, the audience will not have an opportunity to speak again. Okay? That's the rules of order that we operate under, and that's the way it's going to be, unless there's something changes that. Did I, Mr. Secretary, did I announce that correctly?
Absolutely.
All right. Anybody oppose what I just said? All right. So, we've got the rules of order clearly understood, and now we'll proceed to item number three on the agenda. And Mr. Freer, Mr. Fletcher, the floor is yours.
Do we need to close the, or is it closed?
You are correct. We need to close the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed, say no. Thank you for correcting me. Madam Clerk, the public hearing is over. Thank you all for speaking. Number three, the floor is now yours, Mr. Freer.
Yeah, I think I would defer to Commissioner Butler for a second. Thank you. All right. In order to address the concerns that the public, primarily contractors and real estate groups, have brought to the commissioner's attention pertaining to the development fees put forth and passed at the June meeting to be in place July 1st, I recommend a timeout or a cooling off period. Number one, allow for sufficient period of time to fully consider all of the options. And I'm recommending that this not extend any greater than 60 days. Two, this will include a better understanding of the McGill report. Three, review the information provided to McGill that established what the actual goal was, and this does include the $35 million that Elaine mentioned. Four, in the best interest of all parties involved, I'm recommending a timeout. Five, the timeout will include a temporary interim action to repeal and reset the required fees until such time they can be completely reconciled. And when I use the term reconciled, I also include the town budget and any financial aspects going forward. Six, to accomplish this, there will be additional meetings that will include a number of resources to be identified. Examples are the board, staff, McGill, community, and others as needed. Resources will also include comments and suggestions from internal and external sources. Eight, the inspection department needs to take a lead role in this process. Nine, is my last comment, the sewer share fee for the 96, or 93, or 94 remaining lots that have not paid their fee, they need to pay that in full when time is due. Thank you. I pass the chair to John.
So, so let me, let me interrupt. So, I had a conversation with our attorney, and she's not able to attend, but she, she highly recommended that we use the mechanism that, that's in the McGill report on page 10 of the McGill report. She's, and that's what we're going to do, and it's a, I don't know a better word to say it, but use, use the math behind that to get to the same dollar amount, if you will, prior dollar amount of the fees before July 1st. And, go ahead, John.
Point of order, when I conclude my comments.
Yep. When I conclude my comments, well, we need two motions, one to repeal and one to replace, or can one motion do both? Madam Clerk?
I guess the motion can do both. I, I mean, I'm, I'm a little confused because I, we need to update the fee schedule, so I guess it would depend what your motion is. I don't have anything to update the fee schedule. So, I guess we'd have to listen and see where to go with it.
You can repeal with one motion, and that takes the existing fee schedule off the table, but you have to replace it with something, and...
We do a second motion for that.
Yeah, but you're going to have to identify what you wish to, specifically, what it needs to be replaced with.
In the fee schedule.
May I make a comment? I'm uneasy because our town attorney is not here, and to me, if we were going to propose to take an action as of today, without our town attorney here to answer any questions we could have, I would feel that we were doing something that was inappropriate. As I recall, we are all available on September 11th, including the town attorney, where we could then, if there is a desire to do something immediately before the next B O C M, we would have full representation. And that being the case, I would say that we can have discussion, but we should not have action until September 11th, when the town attorney will be at the meeting. And we could recess the meeting and reconvene on that day to finish up any business that is pending after the discussion.
I will add to that comment. I had discussions, extensive discussions, with the attorney, and what I'm going to propose today, she has proposed, was appropriate and could be effective today. She was, I've told her everything that I would propose, and she said she has no issues with it. She's also available by phone if we had to crisis mode to contact her. She doesn't leave till vacation till tomorrow. So, my comments on this issue are that it's very clear to me that House Bill 436 does not suggest that the town implement a sewer water development fee. If we, it simply requires that if we do choose to do that, we cannot make the rates higher than those calculated by the McGill study. While there may be some issues with the McGill study, to me, that's not the issue for me at all. I think what it comes to me now, after all the discussions I've had with the league of municipalities, the real estate folks, a group in Charlotte, and a couple of attorneys, is implementation of assistance development fee should not damage the town. And my primary concern, and I think this reason I got elected, was to protect the financial position of the town, right, and retain our culture that we have. So, I'm thinking that all the time. Is it, am I helping the town? Am I doing what's best for the town? So, the town had a water fee in place as of June 30th. It was $300 for a three-bedroom, which ties in with the McGill report, and $100 for each additional bedroom that was in place. It also had a sewer buy-in in place that had been in place since about 2002, in which all but less than 100 of the 3,000 lots, parcels, had paid their fee already. So, if we were to implement one, those would be exempt from having to pay the new rates. That fee was, I think, and Tim, if you'll correct me, was about $13,500?
It's that actual, I guess that fee is on that questionnaire, by $13,145. Is that what that fee is? Kind of that regular wage scale?
So, I noted that without property taxes, and without B part funds, that's the rental, the rental fee that we get from people who rent their homes, we would have a problem on Holden Beach with financing our operations. With that, that, and in fact, if it doesn't grow, if either the taxes don't go up, or the fees don't grow from rental income or property taxes, we will have to make a major adjustment or raise taxes aggressively in the town. If you cut out the B part fund, we're talking about almost a million dollars a year of expenses that get paid for by those rental, those rental charges. So, to me, the, the building, I'm not concerned about the building industry, if you will, except for its impact on the economy of the town and the region and the county. And to me, this is critical. I've come to realize that it's a severe impact, putting the numbers we put in, had a severe impact on the building trade. No one wants to build. No one wants to buy here and build here. We need them to build here. We need them to build houses that they rent or that they live in, pay property taxes, and bring in B part funds. I propose that the board repeal the Resolution 1805 and replace it with the following schedule of fees. All based on a three-bedroom home, as the McGill report would do, and using the same methodology that the, that the McGill report does, set the water fee at $300 for a three-bedroom home, and $100 for every bedroom beyond. That brings the cost, in agreement with the McGill calculation, to 75 cents a gallon, if you follow the same McGill schedule. I propose that we make the sewer fee $8,100 for a three-bedroom house, with $2,700 additional for each extra bedroom. That would make the five-bedroom house about $13,500, very similar to what we had on June 30th, and I think a five-bedroom is probably the middle of the range of the house sizes that we build on the island. The water would use the 400 gallons used in the calculation, and the sewer would use the 360 gallons. The sewer cost comes back then to a cost of $22.50 per gallon for the sewer system, and that meets exactly the, the system used by, by McGill. I think the board should take at least three months, at least 90 days, to study the matter and to, to allow the issues that are in place with the implementation of this legislation to work themselves out. There are numerous issues of which we have no control. One was the cost to be included in the base. The consumption rates should be used, because they are under severe study right now, and across the state, towns are experiencing severe dropage in the consumption rates from all the things that the people have done to conserve water. The method of calculating the equivalent residential unit, various municipalities across the state, and I got this from a group in, in Charlotte yesterday, based primarily on, actually, meter size, not bedrooms. Others use it on pipe size going in. One local uses on square footage of the house, and obviously McGill used the bedroom, which was included in, in House Bill 436. It appears that the bedroom is actually the least used across the state today. The actual effect on building the fourth area that I think we would need to really recognize and understand fully is what the full impact is on the building and the construction buildings, and the potential damage to our financial health, depending on what rate we were to set. So, I'm thinking that leaving the rates set pretty much as they were on June 30th should not have an adverse impact. We take 90 days to study this and to see how the other things work out. Before we would decide whether or not we want one assistance development fee, it isn't required, and if we do want one, exactly what those rates are, that won't damage the economics of the town, or the financial strength of the town.
So, you said you proposed, are you motion to?
Well, I welcome, but I think we need to discuss it before I make a motion.
Do you have this, do you have this in writing, and can we have it in writing and take a brief recess to go through this privately? Because you're reading something that, I understand what you're reading, but I think we all need to sit down and just go through it, and go through the numbers, and understand where you're coming from.
We take a, move, take a 10-minute recess.
It's going to be, it's going to be more than a 10-minute recess to go through this, but I'm still concerned that our lawyer is not here.
She, she knows these, and she's told me it was appropriate. So, we take a 15-minute recess, Mr. Mayor?
Anyone opposed to recess?
I'm opposed to recess. I'd like, I'd like to say something.
You have the floor.
Okay. Before, before we go on recess, let me just say, I appreciate the information that was brought to us by Ms. Jordan. It is actually the first piece of information that I've heard before my partners here spoke that gave me some reason to question whether or not the amount of the developmental fees are accurate. Having said that, what we've just heard in the last five minutes is a ton of information that has to be digested. One of the things that the builders, contractors, building industry first objected to was they said, "We rushed this through. We didn't take our time. We didn't know what we were talking about." Well, I don't intend to make that mistake. I don't think we, the best thing we can do is to take a temporary step using numbers that we have no idea whether they're accurate or will actually accomplish the goal of getting a number that's both going to protect the interest of the town and also make your livelihood attainable. Nobody sitting up here is trying to make it hard for builders. But my job, the way I look at it is, I'm here to protect the people, the property owners and the people who live on the island. We asked the attorney when she was here whether we could do what's being proposed. No. I don't doubt what you're saying, John, but I would much prefer if there was a letter, an email from her, saying that here's what you proposed, and she agrees with it. You don't have that. I can't see the harm in waiting, I don't think we have to wait 90 days to make a decision on this, but I think we have to look at certain items, and, and I just wrote down before we, and the only reason I'm doing this is because I don't want to go into a meeting for three hours and then come out and do this. I'm telling you what my position is upfront. Everybody will know what we're talking about. One of, one of the reasons I would be against making this, and this has been my position on every issue we've had since I've been on this board, we have regularly scheduled meetings. This room is full of people who have an interest in this, the builders, the contractors. There's about four people who live in the town. I think that we should only vote on something as important as this at a full meeting, when everybody has an opportunity to come. Whether they come or not is not the issue, but to have a full opportunity, we have the discussion in front of as many townspeople, we did it for the terminal groin, we did it for every issue, issue big or small, to me, before you vote on it, it should be at the regular meeting. Secondly, we just got the report back from McGill with the questions. We have that for the grand total of 15 hours. I'll go back to what I said before, not enough time to analyze it, digest it, and so, if we just slow down, take the time necessary to look at it, I think we'd, we'd all be beneficial. The other thing I'd like to ask, John, I know you, you talked about the financial impact, and has anybody on the board did any calculations about what the impact of rolling back the fee to the current, what the number was on June 30th, what impact that will have five years down the line on our coffers? Has anybody done those figures?
I don't feel I would need to do that, because the board can change this next month or three months from now and put new rates in, in which case, five years...
Well, let me just say, for me, as I said, I'm looking to protect the interest of the people who live here, and I will point out that two months ago, this board voted not to take $250,000 that we had available from the budget to put, to put a two-cent reduction in taxes for the people. The argument was that we needed that $250,000 to be put into the sand fund, excuse me, so that 10 or 12 years from now, when we need another central reach project, we would have that money, we wouldn't have a shortfall. Well, I, so, that, that was the position of the majority of the board. Right now, if you roll the fees back, and we go with the anticipated numbers that we were told, that there's roughly 50 houses built on this island every year, if you multiply the 50 into 10 years, excuse me, you have 250 houses, approximately $10,000 fee per house will be forfeited if you go back to the old, the old number. That's 250, I'm sorry, $2.5 million. Now, if we didn't want to have a $250,000 shortfall 10 years into the future, why are we willing to take a $2,500,000 shortfall? It's not consistent, and it's not logical to me. So, for, for those reasons, believe me, we need to look at it, we need to analyze it, and I'm pretty sure we're going to change it. But I want to do it the right way, after we give it the right thought, and we come up with the right numbers, and we don't just make numbers up. We just don't pull numbers out of thin air to make this work. These folks out here are influential. I appreciate that. But there's a simple way of doing things, and there's a right way of doing things. It's not always the same. If we do this today, it's not the right way. Thank you.
I, I also want to make a comment. So, I, I believe we are doing the simple, right thing today. We are, I, I don't believe we're any harm to anybody, taxpayers, landowners, builders, by doing a reset back to two months that was in existence for a long...
were told, that there's roughly fifty houses built on this island every year, if you multiply the fifty into ten years, excuse me, you have two hundred and fifty houses, approximately ten thousand dollars fee per house will be forfeited if you go back to the old, the old number. That's two hundred and fifty, I'm sorry, two-point-five million dollars. Now, if we didn't want to have a two hundred and fifty thousand dollars shortfall ten years into the future, why are we willing to take a two million five hundred thousand dollars shortfall? It's not consistent, and it's not logical to me. So for, for those reasons, believe me, we need to look at it, we need to analyze it, and I'm pretty sure we're gonna change it. But I want to do it the right way after we give it the right thought, and we come up with the right numbers, and we don't just make numbers up. We just don't pull numbers out of thin air to make this work. These folks out here are influential, I appreciate that. But there's a simple way of doing things, and there's a right way of doing things. It's not always the same. If we do this today, it's not the right way. Thank you.
I, I'd also like to make a comment. So I, I believe we are doing the, the simple, right thing today. We are, I, I don't believe we're any harm to anybody, taxpayers, landowners, builders, by doing a reset back to two months that was in existence for a long time. So, um, and I think in the, in the contrary, if we, and, and, and Mike, you're right, it's a lot, a complex issue, I think, a very complex issue. Uh, we will be doing harm to, to the town and, and the people here, but as John mentioned, the town, um, you know, by, by slowing or stopping, um, home building, and, and that's all we're trying to accomplish today, is go back to prior to July one to have enough time for us and, and everyone involved, um, to look at these complex issues, and I'll, I'll, I, I, I don't understand, this is the maximum that we could charge as fees. It is not the recommendation that we charge as fees. So to me, this report is like, nice, it brought out, i- i- it highlights some financial issues, like the capacity, what, what capacity are we paying to county for our sewer, um, that I'd like to look into deeper, but it has abs, but it's, all it's telling me is the maximum I, we can charge for fees. It is not telling me, telling the town what we can, should, or recommend what those fees should be. So it, it's an unknown that we should spend a lot of time researching the underlying financials that, and, and that's only one of thirty-five million dollars, there's others as well. So, um, what we're doing is doing no harm by, by taking a timeout today, uh, on either side.
Okay, all right, we're, here with me just a minute. To get our house in order, we should, apparent, apparent, it appears to me that we have gotten over into a discussion which is not the thing to be doing if.
Are we gonna make the motion?
Yeah, if, if, yeah, we need to have a motion if you're gonna discuss.
Okay.
Okay, and I'll come back to you and just, unless you have something.
Aye.
That I don't know about that we need to do before we hear John's motion. All right, John, what's your motion?
And I will read it slowly, so that if you will, you want to write down, because it's a real simple process.
Okay, are we talking about a motion to a recess, or are we talking about a motion to pass something? What's your motion?
So, so let me, let me comment. We, a motion to recess, I, you know, we can't go into a, to do that legally and discuss things.
I can, I can just say recess, if that's what you want me to do.
Okay, but the three, three of us cannot go, go and discuss anything.
The, can I interject? You, you can admit, you can recess to, to direct the staff to prepare an administrative document. You can't recess to close session.
Okay, okay. So, so as John had mentioned, our attorney is available by telephone, so if you want to do that, or, or direct the staff to, to, uh, to do what you're saying, John.
May I repeat one of the, why I said I'd like a recess? You've just read me formulas and numbers, okay? You want me to make a decision on formulas and numbers that you have thrown at me that I can't sit down and double-check them and see what they mean? That's the first thing. I'm also, I'm looking at, we had two possible actions, and we're, it sounds like, gonna go down the path of one of them. The other one might be another way to operate, and just because number three is before number four, we make a decision to do something? I, I'm, I'm sort of, I, I am, I am sort of perplexed, but at the very least, I like to look at numbers and do the math myself just to double-check that I understand what's being proposed, and what's being proposed is correct in line with what the intent is. But I, I am, I, I am still, I, this is a lot that we're doing all at one minute, and we could recess at the very least until September eleventh, when everybody's available again. And I also, making decisions at the regular B O C M is important. For heaven's sake, we made our trash decisions at that meeting rather than a special meeting, and that wasn't nearly as important as this. So, but I am asking for a recess, enough time to look at what is being proposed, to double-check it, and possibly to call the attorney.
Okay.
What do the commissioners want me to do?
Move, take a fifteen-minute recess.
Okay, I'm good with that.
All right.
Can we recess?
Joe, Peter, and John, you want a recess, fifteen minutes?
Yes, sir.
We're gonna be talking about, so if you'll see him, possibly get a copy from him. Madam Clerk, if you will, let the minutes show that we are reconvening at, what is that, eleven thirteen? And the reason for the delay was the preparation of the documents needed to continue. Took this long, and, um, we're officially back in session. So, um, all right, commissioners, where are we now? What's your pleasure?
I'm ready to make a motion.
Whatever you want to do.
Okay. I move that the board repeal, uh, Resolution eighteen oh five, and replace it with the following rate structure for both water and sewer. For the water capacity fee, the fee will be three hundred dollars for a three-bedroom house and a hundred dollars for every extra bedroom. For the sewer, it will be eight thousand one hundred dollars for a three-bedroom and twenty-seven hundred dollars for each additional bedroom.
A second?
All right, discussion, anybody?
Okay, I, wait. So are you still applying the, you've said twenty-seven hundred dollars per bedroom?
Above, above three bedrooms.
It's above three bedrooms.
Yes. It's eighty-one hundred plus.
Just to make that clear. I would still, I would, I would actually like to, to propose an alternative to temporarily resetting and ask whether or not it wouldn't be a more straightforward, cleaner process if we would say, if we would go through reevaluation of this whole situation, we can come to agreement if we have to have another engineering report, have the discussion necessary after that is done. We will get this done within, we can say a ninety-day period, a one-hundred-day period, whatever, and then once those are set, there will be reimbursement of the difference between what has been voted in place already and what will replace it in the future, starting from the July first implementation. So instead of trying to temporarily set something, let us do this right, let us get it done, and then we could make a motion to agree to reimburse when we get the new fees in place, retroactive to July first. It's an alternative.
So, so, um, we've already got, I don't know, what, what is today? We've already got, uh, a month and three-quarters in of unknown. We're trying to not extend that, and I appreciate the, the discussion. We're trying not to, um, extend that, and we're trying to be as close as we possibly can within the confines of the new law of going back to June thirtieth. Um, that's why we're staying with the hundred dollars per bedroom and water, and that's why unfortunately, there's not a like-to-like in, in bedrooms for sewer, right? There was thirteen-five or whatever exact number, uh, for three or fifteen bedrooms for sewer. So that's why we, we picked the five-bedroom, which I'm, John's proposing the five-bedroom at a, at a, and would be the equivalent of that thirteen-five, that's, the math goes to thirteen-five. So, um, so I think, um, waiting, again, you're putting a lot, a lot of pressure on the board, the community by an unknown, where we're, what we're proposing today is to take that pressure off and just resetting the clock to June thirtieth, um, so that, that, to relieve that pressure.
I, I guess I don't, I don't view it as relieving pressure because we are still under, we, or we all should still feel under the gun to get this done right.
I, I totally agree, but to get it right, done right, there's, it's, it's, we're seeing the complexity of it. That thirty-five million is just one of the bigger issues. There's other, other issues, and I would argue, there's underlying financial issues in this whole report that, you know, what, how have we been treating sewer capacity? How have we been treating the, the payment to the county for our, our sewer treatment? So I'd like to understand some of the, some of the underlying numbers, issues that, that went into these, uh, this report. So there's multiple levels in my mind of the thirty-five million, should it even be in there? And then, uh, you know, how are we, how are we handling water and sewer, um, with the county and with, uh, with other entities, if that's the, if that's the, what's been brought out?
John, John, the only other thing I, I'd like to, as far as, as far as the motion, we, you know, I had recommended that the word interim be put in there, I think that's a key term, and I don't know whether I have the right to speak now or not because we had a, this, this is the motion that you put on the floor.
We're at a discussion.
We're in discussion, okay. All right, so, but this is, so it's clear to everybody that this is interim, and whether it's sixty days, ninety days, or whatever else, we need a timeframe put on that, so we make it happen.
I, I've got some administrative questions and a couple of, of specifics I'd like to bring to the board's attention, if that's okay, and it's relative to the material that are prepared in the back room.
Okay.
Um, I know that it's been mentioned on resetting the clock. There are fees in, that were in effect on the thirtieth of June that cannot be charged after one July. Those are the impact fees for various, you, you can't charge impervious surface impact fees. So those, those, those cannot be reset. Also, the thirteen thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollar sewer share fee cannot be charged anymore. Those are done away with. We're not able to do that. The law reads that our existing fee schedules have to be conformed to the new law. And just by way of, of clarification, um, the motion is, I know, John, you used five bedrooms and three bedrooms, but on that first sheet, just so whenever, should this pass, that what we're talking about is a hundred dollar per bedroom fee for water, regardless of how many bedrooms. You can have a one-bedroom house, because I know somebody's got a two-bedroom house, and they're gonna say, "Well, I'm paying three hundred dollars, can I have a refund?" You know, so I would just like to make sure that we clarify that. It's a hundred dollars per bedroom for the water fee, regardless of how many bedrooms it is, and it's a twenty-seven hundred dollar sewer fee per bedroom, one bedroom, two hundred bedrooms. I just want to make sure that administratively, because this is a fee schedule you're amending, and we have to be able to collect on that. Is that?
Correct.
That's, am I, is, do I understand it right?
You're correct.
Okay, all right. To the, um, to the supplemental sheets, um, that I included in that package, um, Rick's got yours. Um, I, I, what I've, I've done, just so if this passes, um, so y'all will know what the effect, um, on these sheets are specific permits for a three-bedroom house, a four-bedroom house, and a five-bedroom house. These are specific examples of the before thirty-June, uh, fees charged, the fees that would have been charged one July, and then now in the far right-hand column, the proposed per-bedroom fee for water and sewer. So the, all things equal, backing out the impact fees, deleting the old bedroom fees for a three-bedroom house, implementing this new fee structure, it's gonna cost you seventy-two hundred thirty dollars and fifty cents more than it would prior to thirty-June, okay? For a four-bedroom house, that delta's ninety-four hundred dollars, and for a five-bedroom house, it's gonna be eleven thousand eight hundred and forty-five dollars. Okay? So that's, that's what the per-bedroom fee does for you. That's what implementing the proposal is.
So, are you, are you done?
Yeah, I just wanted to, to, to show the, 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 the impact of, of implementing that.
I, I may be mistaken here, but I thought that the law required that you only charge the actual cost for the tap fee, that you can't, if, if somebody wants to tap into the sewer, the fee for tapping into the sewer, the actual cost of doing the manual tapping can only be the labor and cost and expenses. Is that correct, or is that?
Okay, we, we actually do not charge a sewer tap fee because the connection is really part of the system, it's the valve pit, and that's a systemic cost that is absorbed, um, through our operations. Not so true for water because the water tap fee is the actual fixture, and what it costs for a crew to go out there and install a fixture.
Okay, well, it's just that when I'm looking at the fees, it says sewer tap fee.
Slash, slash bedroom fee.
Okay.
That's, and we took this straight from the fee software.
Okay.
My, my question is, on a three-bedroom, for example, um, if you look at current, after post-July one, we, um, towards the bottom, you have sewer share fee paid, yes, and, and it's zero, and no is the eighty-one hundred dollars. That's what I, I would complete this column. I don't know why it wasn't completed, but, uh, that's logic to me.
Well, I, the, the, the sewer share fee is, is zero, um, in this context.
Well, that's not, I don't think what was being proposed. The sewer share fee is eighty-one hundred dollars. So, I mean, you could, you left it blank, um, up top, but, so I would just repeat this, this, this column, and if you did it at post-July one, we can certainly do it now. So, you know, you, you see where the total is? The two lines above that should be exactly?
I, I think what you're saying is that the, the E R U is eighty-one hundred dollars, and the credit carries forward as below.
As, as, as column two.
As I'm saying, it's, it's the, it's the E R U credit.
Go up.
No, no, I understand what you're saying. That number, that, yes, but what we're referring to is the E R U credit, the way that it was being calculated at the bottom, correct?
True, but go up three, four lines? See how it says sewer share fee paid, question mark, yes, zero, zero, and we should have a zero, and no, I would assume this is the next line, uh, would be?
Well, for this, in this particular instance, that sewer share fee on this lot has been paid, so it would be. paid, so it would be zero. All of these specific examples have had their sewer share fee paid.
Okay, but this is very misleading.
Well, I mean, it's, it's, it's the numbers.
No, it's not. You put the numbers in column June thirtieth and then July one, and we should do the exact same thing for proposed.
Okay, that's a zero then.
Thank you. But you're, you're saying that if it is paid, it's zero, but if it isn't paid, it's eighty-one-hundred dollars for a three-bedroom.
So what you're saying is that the sewer, sewer share fee, okay.
You gave a floor rate, correct? You have floor rates.
This is, this is, again.
No, you adopted sixty-seven percent of it.
The floor, it said exactly.
It's the credit.
Is, is, is?
It's the credit.
The credit.
Right. Okay, so the, the question then becomes is, for those folks that have paid in accordance with that fee schedule more than eighty-one-hundred dollars, because it could go back several years, people that?
We're not, we're not crediting existing houses. We're crediting new, and, and, and we're only crediting if they paid.
Okay.
New building.
Well, but the, the, the fact of the matter is, is that sewer share fee could have been paid on a vacant lot, and that sewer share fee attaches, the entitlement to the, connect to the sewer runs with the lot.
Yes.
Okay?
Yeah. All I'm doing is asking you to do exactly what we're doing right now.
Okay.
Post-July one.
Right, and, and my question is, if somebody had paid two years ago in accordance with that fee schedule, let's say that it was eleven-thousand dollars.
I don't really care what happened two years ago, to be honest with you, because, you know, you're doing it right now.
Do, do we need to talk to Noel again?
No, I don't think we need to talk to Noel.
No, I, I understand where David's coming from, although I think with the cha, I think with the change, it's, again, it's, when things change, it's like when, all of a sudden, we can't deduct more than ten-thousand dollars a year in our property taxes. It becomes, whatever was happening in the past, it's like, damn, it happened, but going forward, this is how we have to do it.
I'm being consistent, I'm asking for consistency within the change.
As I understand it, what we're saying is, the maximum ERU for sewer could have been fourteen-thousand, whatever, almost fifteen-thousand. That's the maximum that you can adopt. Now you have said, we're not gonna charge the maximum, our ERU becomes eighty-one-hundred.
All right, I, I got it.
I think that's what, that's what.
Okay, so, so the correction to this spreadsheet is that the eighty-one-hundred dollars moves down to the capacity fee for sewer?
If you haven't paid the sewer fee previously.
If you hadn't, right.
Because if you have, you get, you're exempt from it then.
You get the, it wasn't exempt, you get a credit for it.
Get a credit for it. So you don't pay any fee. If you've already paid the fee, you don't pay another fee.
It's twenty-seven-hundred dollars, has to be added, and zero above that on the, at column, because that's the, can we ask, I mean, this is how we're conducting right now, it's in there now, post-July one. I'm not, I'm just, can we ask, Tim, who, who runs these fees?
I'm only gonna answer if David tells me I can.
Thank you.
David tells me to get up there and talk, I'll talk. I'm not gonna do that, because I'm afraid when I start talking, I'm not gonna have a job.
Fair enough, I don't wanna put you in the spot. So it should be zero for sewer share fee paid, question mark, yes, and the next line should be twenty-seven-hundred dollars.
Do we need a fifteen-minute recess to make sure everybody knows exactly what they're saying on these documents and where you, to define, remember, we're defining the base ERU, and then it's an extra per, just to make sure this document is correct?
Okay, I'm, I'm, ten minutes, I'm good. I have to go back to Charlotte, to be honest with you.
I, I, I understand, I understand, but what do we wanna, I'm, this is why I would have actually liked to have, you know, done it on September eleventh, so that these kinds of things don't happen again.
This is so simple.
It's an open meeting, we've got talk out loud so people can hear.
Do we need a ten-minute break?
Here, here, here's a point before your break, I want, I wanna make sure that I register here. Whatever the capacity fee is per bedroom that you charge, you have to apply that to every, everyone.
Understood, understood.
Okay.
Understood. And that's, and that's why it's a little bit strange that we're going to eighty-one-hundred, because that's, we're, we're, because we never did that thirteen-one-fifty, I guess it is now, according to bedroom. So it's a little strange that we're saying it's eighty-one-hundred, but if you do the math, a five-bedroom, that we're, you know, we're saying it is our average, five-bedroom comes out to thirteen-five, so. Do we need a break? Or are you good?
Consensus, ten-minute break, is that what we're doing?
Before your break, will you recognize the one-minute back?
Yeah.
Then, then you better open it up.
It's, it's up to us.
That's true, that's true.
We need to get this document.
Ma'am, I can't, I cannot recognize you. I'm sorry. Ma'am, I cannot.
Take a ten-minute.
Take ten minutes, okay.
Take ten.
All right, ten-minute recess. Okay, thanks for bearing with us, we'll come back to order, and I can't remember who had the floor last, or who wants the floor. Still in open discussion, is that where we are?
Yeah, so I, I think, I think we worked it out, and it's a little confusing to everybody, I think, because the, I was saying twenty-seven-hundred, but it's actually times three, right? Because we're doing, dealing with, I was looking at three-bedroom, so eighty-one-hundred. So I think that David is in agreement to that?
I, I understand it, I think, yeah. So what, what it is, is the, the, on that three-bedroom fee spreadsheet, basically the, the eighty-one-hundred dollar amount that's in the bedroom fee cell would move down to the capacity fee sewer line item, line, likewise for the, the three-hundred-dollar entry, because that's the, that's the capacity fee for water.
Yes, correct.
All right, I get that.
Okay.
All right, and then, which, which begets the question, and, and the reciprocal holds true for the four and five, five-bedroom calculation too.
Correct.
And what, where the, the controversy, I think, that had ensued is, how do you treat the credit for a previous paid sewer share fee under, once that, once that calculation is done? And then, if it's, if it has been paid, the credit is on a per-bedroom basis for sewer. There would be a credit for, on a per-bedroom basis, for the sewer capacity fee. In this scenario, the, the eighty-one-hundred dollars is pretty much the credit.
Yeah, so I would treat it exactly the way we're doing it today.
With the understanding that it's only up to a five-bedroom credit.
And, and.
Above a five-bedroom credit, then you pay twenty-seven-hundred dollars a bedroom for sewer fee.
Yep. So you modify, you're gonna modify your?
With, with the understanding that if that fee had not been paid prior to, there, there is no credit.
Yeah, so we're not gonna credit a six-bedroom, because if that logic would, we'd be crediting more than you potentially, the maximum you pay now, so.
So the credit will extend only up to five bedrooms worth at the twenty-seven-hundred-dollar per bedroom capacity fee?
Correct, correct.
Yeah, that needs to capture, impart that motion.
So, if I can amend the proposal, or the motion? So if you will add on to the end, the credit for those who've paid already the sewer share fee will be up to a maximum of a five-bedroom house. Beyond a five-bedroom house, you will be assessed a twenty-seven-hundred dollars per bedroom sewer development fee.
Who made the second?
I did, I'll.
Do you agree to the amendment?
Yes, sir.
All right, everybody understand the amended motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay, discussion continues.
Are we ready to vote?
No, we're not.
We're not? Do you want to talk some more?
Yes, I do.
Yeah.
Thank you. I, I think, I, I'm not going to state all the reasons I think we should delay this vote, other than the last forty-five minutes on one item, which is under discussion and consideration. With all of the items that we've been given to think about today and in the past, I just think it's prudent that we put off any final decisions, because when we have to come back here, after, after we sit down and get a chance to analyze everything and give it the thought that it deserves, and we come back with different numbers, then it's going to be just as hard to convince the people that we did our due diligence and did the right thing. And I know that the industry would like this to have been done yesterday or six weeks ago, but I don't see where we're benefiting the larger community by rushing into a decision without having the time to analyze it. And one other thing I'd like to say is, obviously, there was a lot of work done. That work should have been included in the packet so that we could have saved ourselves this exercise here of trying to figure out what everybody was trying to say with these numbers. We should, we should never, ever, and this has been my position since we've been here, and I have to say it almost every meeting, we should never be taking on issues that aren't fully prepared and put in the agenda so we can do it intelligently with the proper consideration. And that, that's my, that's my take on this.
Are you through discussing? All right, I want to throw a word of caution, and Madam Clerk, I want to make sure this gets in the minutes. Previously, the town had to go back and adjust in regards to properties that were not developable in regards to water fees, and I keep hearing this discussion about a hundred names or so, plus or minus, that haven't paid their sewer bills, and I am confident that I am on that list, and I am confident there are others in the room that are on that list, and I'm not ashamed of it. If you can make me and the rest of us that have properties, as I'm going to describe, able to build on those properties, we would be more than happy to pay the fee. But when you've got strips of land underwater, or five and ten feet wide, and you, the commissioners, are expecting to have that money coming in later, in simple terms, I'm telling you that that list of a hundred plus or minus properties is not going to yield you the money that you were expecting to get, and before you count on that money coming in and make rules expecting that money to come in, you need to do your homework and eliminate from that list properties that are never gonna be developable. Because I'm not paying on the ones that I can't use, all I can do is pay taxes on it, can never use it. So we've got pie in the sky there, and I'm just pointing out to you, for those that weren't around in the water system days, if the same thing you're dealing with on the sewer is gonna come back and haunt you, and you're gonna have a shortfall on your expectation. And that's my two cents' worth of history.
Totally agree with you, Mr. Mayor. The only time within the past twelve years, or whenever we started this, is you pay that when you, when you are gonna build something, right? So I, I, I agree, we shouldn't put that into budget at all, because a lot of those will never, ever be built. Totally agree.
All right, you ready to vote, please, sir? All in favor of the motion, the as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
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 It's three to two, Madam Clerk, motion passes. Are we on number four? Mr. Fletcher, Mr. Freer?
Yes, sir. You want?
Go ahead.
I move that the board direct the town to reimburse any fee assessments that were paid after July the first, 2018, that exceed those set by this new rate structure set by the board today.
I second.
This is the interim, I'm gonna throw the word interim in there again, please, just so there's no misunderstanding.
You accept that? You're gonna modify your?
Motion.
Motion.
I'm to amend it to include that, that the interim fees.
Right, today's interim fees.
Can you forward that to the interim fees?
Yeah, I, I second that.
Wait, 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 can you please read that again?
Okay, the chair requests the reading of the motion for clarity.
Madam Clerk, you want to read back?
Yeah, I think so, but my computer just froze, you might have to correct, I've got it on tape. Direct the town to reimburse any fee assessment that exceeds the new rate structure set today.
But make it the interim rate structure?
Interim.
Set today.
Okay, everybody understand where we are? We have a motion, a second, floor is open for discussion.
Okay, what happens if, after we finish everything, the water fee goes up? When we do our reassessment in the interim?
Yep.
Okay, and if our final recommendation, in particular on the water, goes up, what happens?
It'll be effective the day we pass the legislation.
Okay, so, so there is no ability for us to get back the lost revenue? I just want to make clear.
That's correct, just like.
I, I just want to make clear.
Yeah, prior to, yeah.
But if we pass something that is, and if we end up after a whole reanalysis, and we pass numbers that are lower than these, then?
These numbers?
Then these numbers, yes, then what?
Well, except that, if we wanted to give them a refund or not, right? This is refund as of now, for anything that paid between now and today.
Refund, refund, refund from July first to today.
Till today.
Period.
And there's very little of that. It's a very small num, very small number as of today.
Hearing none, are you ready to vote?
Yes, sir.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Unanimous, Madam Clerk? Number five.
Could, could, before, I'm sorry, you're right, it's not on the agenda.
Mr. Hewitt?
Uh, my report is bringing forward some more good news on the shallow draft inlet condition in the Lockwood Folly. Attended a meeting yesterday in New Bern on the, uh, the quarterly memorandum of agreement between the state, the Corps, and interested stakeholders up and down the coast, from Dare County all the way through, uh, the Brunswick coastal communities. What we see, what we see in terms of conditions, with the most recent survey on the outer bar in the Lockwood Folly inlet, it's getting kinda dangerous, about five, seven feet, uh, deep on the outer bar. The inner bar, where the flood shoal at the inlet crossing, which is where, right there, Brown's Landing. That's got some speed bumps in it, the Ben Widener, um, which is on the other side of the waterway next to Sheep Island, is, um, is, is pretty much an emergent shoal there now, it's, it's getting pretty shallow. The Corps has, uh, canceled the nearshore project. Before I go any further, I wanna make sure that I qualify everything that I say here based on what we're getting from the Corps and the updates from the Corps that we got yesterday. Some of them held true with what we've been told in the past. Some of the information was changing and evolving as we were in the room. So, what I'm gonna tell you is, uh, the best that we have repeated from a meeting that we're at, we were at yesterday, that may be subject to change. So, previously, we had reported that the Merton, which is a hopper dredge, was going to be used to remove about 6,000 cubic yards from the Ebb Shoal, uh, which is the outer bar, and be placed in the nearshore at a hotspot o, off of Oak Island. That permutated into an estimate of about 30,000 yards. That project is not going to happen this year. There are other resources, namely, the Merit is now returning from the shipyard, is, and is getting ready to go back in the, into action. And so, it's my understanding that the Merton will be re, um, reprioritized to other projects elsewhere. Its status as a national asset, it's going somewhere else. So the nearshore project's not gonna happen over on, uh, taking sand from the outer bar and putting it on over, over, uh, on the west end of Oak Island. There was, there is a project to use, uh, eighteen-inch hopper, uh, excuse me, pipeline dredge. Many times, we've used Southwind in the past, uh, the Little Dredge for the inlet crossing. That project is not coming to Holden Beach either. You know, every two years, we've been used to getting the sand from the inlet crossing. That project is not happening this winter, this fall, this winter. And in fact, that sand will be placed on Oak Island. Those contracts, the contract to place, uh, to dredge the Lockwood Folly inlet is part of a larger core contract to take care of, of, uh, all of the shallow draft inlets crossing up Carolina Beach. Five of them on up the way there. We don't know what time, uh, or order of progression that the dredger will undertake. They pretty much get a con, they get a big contract, and if there's a dredge coming from Florida going that way, it'll start, you know, south and then work north. If it's coming from, uh, from Norfolk going south, it'll start, you know, up north and work its way down. So we don't know when the timing of that actual dredging is gonna take place. Part of that, I, I would say a major portion of the reason for the sand not coming to Holden Beach is a new interpretation of an existing rule, federal rule regarding local sponsorship of federal projects that requires easements to be obtained from local property owners in order to put the sand on the beach as part of a least-cost method beneficial placement, uh, protocol. It's never been a requirement before, or it's never been an enforced requirement before. And for many, many years, Holden Beach has been the recipient, um, out of, of convenience for the Corps of Engineers, and then also when we've actually executed, uh, the Towns Project down there, didn't have to have it. It's not the case, uh, going forward. Additionally, there are, uh, new requirements for dredge bowl areas that we've encountered earlier on, uh, with our canal dredging project. And that even though the town owns the dredge bowl islands here, we're not gonna be allowed to place dredge material from the canals in those dredge bowl islands, because the Corps has to retain the capacity in those dredge bowl islands for the inner coastal waterway work. That's a perpetual project, and, um, unless there is some type of change in, in this new interpretive policy, we're not gonna be allowed to access for local projects, placing material in there. That's why we're having to evolve the Scotch Bonnet Site into a dredge bowl holding area, uh, for town projects. So, that's pretty much my report on that.
Does that change, does that affect the cost of those dredge, uh, canal dredge projects, David?
It, it's part of what, uh, the work associated with that, well, it's included in the budgets to do that work. Yeah, as a matter of fact, it's...
But changing where we're gonna put the material doesn't, uh...
Not, not for this project. I mean, we, we, we had, uh, we had heads up on that about eight months ago. Okay, that, that's different from the easement requirement issue related to beach placement of beneficial, beneficial placement of compatible material.
So if, if I can confirm, so, is the material that's placed off that island at the Shaloot Inlet Area, is that usable on our beach?
It's, there's a lot of fines in it, and, um, it's, it's pretty good for growing tomatoes, but it's got a lot of, uh, of fines and, uh, biological material, organic material in it, there's a lot of mud in it.
So we would normally try to use that as a source?
It's not acceptable for beach, beach, uh, placement.
And other than our own source, are there other sources that we might grow sand from, that's, that is placeable? We have our sand off the, off the beach, right, that you can bring on? You have the pit?
Uh, there, there are two, um, town has two permits currently, um, or, or two sources of sand. One is the Turkey Trap Road Sand Mine that it owns, and the other one, of course, is the identified, uh, approved bar site for the Central Reach Project. So we got two, two sources for sand.
And I wouldn't describe that as our sand. It's sand that we can...
Now, I mean, the, the Lockwood Folly inlet sand is, is there, it's just that that is not going to happen this year. That's not the town's sand either. Remember, this is a federal navigation project that, out of convenience to the Corps, it's cheaper to put it, um, you know, on the nearby beach.
So the easement issue is trumping the least-cost method and beneficial placement? Basically? And, and, and we were not privy to that change prior to yesterday, or...
We had had, um, I guess, a, a, prior to yesterday, it was a, it was a phone call that I got last Thursday that said, "The sand's going over to Oak Island because you guys don't have easements."
Okay.
Yeah.
You know, you wanna...
Yeah, let's, yeah, Mike, Mike and I also attended the meeting yesterday. And, uh, I gotta say that, you know, going into the meeting, um, versus how I left the meeting, two different stories there. The issue pertaining to the easements, Mike did a great job in challenging the Corps on the, on the issue, or the exact issue. And part of what, and I don't want to put any words in Mike's mouth, but I want to compliment him for jumping in on it. He said, you know, Holden Beach was not even communicated with, we weren't involved in any of these, you know, the, the status of the easements. Did anybody ever call, prior to making that decision, did anybody ever call and ask us what that drawing they had in front of them? And that, no, the answer was no to that, you know? The Corps admittedly said that they, they could have handled things differently, and they could have handled things a little better. The thing that really disturbs me right now is that I'm uncomfortable, totally uncomfortable, as I'm sure David is, Mike is, and every person in the room should be too as well, that Jim Medlock's seen to be a fine gentleman. His, his job is, he's the project, uh, manager for the Corps. He is going, I don't know where he's going, on what position he's taken, but he announced yesterday as far as he's no longer has responsibility, as of yesterday's meeting pertaining to the information or the, the maintenance of shallow draft inlets. And there's another gentleman, his name is Brendan, Brendan Dooley, is gonna be the gentleman that we would be communicating with in the future. That kinda really disturbs me a little bit, because we lose our primary con contact, you know? I, uh, I mentioned a comment, and Mike, I don't know whether you want to say anything about easements?
Go ahead, go ahead.
You're good. I also mentioned the fact that, uh, you know, we all know that, uh, that we are losing sand on the east end of the island, and I mentioned that. I mentioned the fact that in 2005, when I built my home here on Holden Beach, the east end of the island, with sandbags all over it and everything else like that, was deplorable. I mean, a major concern there, huge concern. Over the years, with the renourishment, with the money that has gone into it, with the replenishment programs, and that, there's a beach out there that we can be proud of right now, and that, and the quality of sand that's, that's there. And how did that occur? That, that really came about as a result of the sand from the Lockwood Folly, right, going on there, on those beaches, and that. And I, I, I have to say, they might not care about the money, but me, I care about the money. I care about the, I care about the decision factor and what, how, how do you make a decision? You make, make a decision based on facts, right? It's less expensive, it's gotta be less expensive to put pipes and put the sand on Holden Beach than it is on, on Oak Island. You know, my example is, you see my pinky? That 88,000 cubic yards of sand that they talked about in the meeting yesterday, right, on the beach at Oak Island? Read about the size of my pinky, and that. So, it, the whole thing doesn't make sense to me. And because I'm, I'm extremely uncomfortable with that, I think we need to develop a strategy, because in years to come, doesn't sound like it's gonna get any better. We need to develop a strategy that will support a plan in dealing with these types of issues going forward. I recommend we consult with Clark Wright, the North Carolina Coastal Federation, and anyone else that can help us. This type of action will provide to us, to include the inlet beach committee and the board. Right, the, the kind of, where do we go from here? It'd make us feel a little bit more com, comfortable, all right? Because right now, I can tell you, I'm not comfortable with this. And without having a strategy and without having a plan in place, I think, once again, my term is, we need, we need to obtain the right resources and have them available to us to help us with this issue. I don't want to turn around next year, I don't want to go to that meeting and then turn around that they're making a decision or award a contract for dredging the inlet, and we lose that sand. Now's time. This was a wake-up call yesterday. And I don't like wake-up calls, I'm not a morning person. Thank you.
Okay, I, I'll just add a, a little bit to that. The, uh, the Corps admitted that they did not consult with us prior to making the decision. And based on historical, uh, nature of the, uh, the dredging at Lockwood Folly, that was, that was quite a shock, since we had traditionally received that, and we didn't do it because they were being kind to us. We did it because, based on the most efficient and, uh, least expensive cost, that it cost the Corps less. I mean, the Corps doesn't really care about our beach, they just care about their job, which is to dredge the folly. So they want to deposit the material in the, in the quickest way, in the least expensive way imaginable. So, they didn't call us, they admitted that, uh, when they were asked, uh, if they called, they, they just looked at a map and saw that there were X number of lots on Holden and much fewer over on Oak Island. And they just made that decision on, on the need for, for, uh, de-easements. What we, what we got out of the meeting really doesn't help us with the sand, it was an apology and acknowledgement that they should have done it differently and should have done it better. But we also got a, an acknowledgement that in the future, it'll never be done like that again. We'll always have a seat at the table, we'll always be notified, and at least we'll have our voice there. I agree with Joe, I think what we need to do is, what should be done, whenever you're trying to persuade somebody to do something that they may not want to do, is come in with some facts. And so we have Fran Way at ATM, and I'm, I've asked David to have Fran do an analysis to show that when you put the sand on the west end of Oak Island, rather than on the east end of Holden, that it goes back into the Lockwood quicker. Now, I think everybody here already believes that and understands that, but I think we, we want the analysis done, so you can show that that's a fact. And also, the fact that it's been cheaper in the past to drop it here, there's no reason why it won't continue to be cheaper to drop it here. And so those should be the two arguments that we make, and they should be persuasive. So, I, I'm hoping that in the future, it'll go back to what it was, where we'll get that sand every other year, that we're missing, that we're gonna miss out on this year.
I, uh, a couple more factoids that are relative to finances and costs. The shallow draft inlet fund, which is, um, the state's, uh, pot of money that goes into, um, contributions to the Corps, it's matched with local money. That total now is about $34 million. Every time you fill up your tank of gas, you pay like, uh, uh, a sixth of a penny, and then your boater's registration license goes into that pot of money. I want to make sure that we register the fact that an appropriation of that $34 million has been made in order to, uh, to give Dare County $15 million in order to build, or in order to develop a public-private partnership with a, uh, s, a private contractor to build a dredge to take care of Oregon Inlet. So, not only will the $34 million, you know, be depleted by $15 million, but then the money that remains will also go to fund the operations for that dredge, which I'd be very surprised if it ever makes it down past Juan Chees, to be quite frankly. So, uh, that, that pot of money is going to, from the state's contributing aspect, is gonna receive more and more pressure to fund these Corps of Engineers projects in, in the future. to fund these Corps of Engineers projects in the future.
Anybody else?
That's been a while.
Throw a tidbit in. We have an upcoming meeting with a consulting firm to offer suggestions and so forth to the town in regards to improving our position on grants and sand and the politics of the world and helping us get more favorable relationships with the Corps and the powers that be. I've been a proponent of this for some time and have failed to get the blessings of the town with this board. What is it, Madam Clerk? Is it the 11th at 3:00?
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth? Got so many meetings. All right. The 18th at 3:00 in this room, Ryan.
Yes.
The commissioners will hear options for us to consider. And we've got to do something. We're being out, forgive the word, we're being out politicked. And we are being circumvented by our neighbors with end runs and getting deals that are much better than what we're getting right now. And we have been on a downward spiral now for an extended period of time in getting our share of monies and other benefits, despite the hard work of Christie and others. And now we've got a committee here in the town that will help. It's got to be all of us working together. And what we've been doing is failing. So the rules have changed, and we've got to adapt to it. We've got to have some bigger guns with louder voices than what we've got. And Joe, those of you that went to the meeting yesterday, I've been to so many of those meetings in the last 40 years. You know, I negotiated the new Corps line on the island. You know, I go back a long ways. And I have a fairly decent understanding of who, what, and where things are done with the Corps. And I'm just telling you that we've got to revamp our program. Or we're going to find ourselves really left out. The federal monies have dried up pretty much. But there are ways to get help. And we've got to be able to play in the new arena that's out there. And I'm looking forward to working with you commissioners and the staff and trying to adapt to get something done because, as said many times recently, we are losing sand at the east end. Our waterway is stopping up. That's the reason you don't see the commercial traffic we used to have. It's just really a bad picture. And so anyway, without rambling on and wasting everybody's time, that's my two cents' worth. I look forward to the 18th. Christie?
Just one other comment from yesterday. I will say that in a sidebar conversation, the Corps was pressed again on presenting to the commissioners on the 50-year project.
Okay, good. Okay, anything else on this item on the agenda? Is there a motion adjourned?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all for being here.